Today is Monday, November 28th, 2016, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, we have an appointment, some increase, decrease, and changes in assignment, a leave of absence, a resignation, a retirement, financial reports, and a grant request.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay. Seeing no one come forward, we can move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes from the regular school board meeting held on Monday, November 14th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Margaret. Is there a second? Second by Fritz. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, November 14th, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on. Announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman.
Yes, we have three announcements this evening. First, Northfield Middle School student-run bookstore, The Tattered Pages, is accepting donations for the upcoming 10th Annual Holiday Shopping Extravaganza. The holiday shopping extravaganza kicks off on Friday, December 16th, and the bookstore provides an opportunity for middle school students to purchase holiday gifts without spending actual money. Wouldn't that be nice for the rest of us, right? Students earn coupons in a variety of ways, such as donating books, working in the bookstore, completing volunteer jobs, and by excelling in the classroom. And if you've not ever seen the activity that goes along with that at the middle school, it's quite an operation, and Amy Siev and the team over there do a really nice job of providing this to the students. Second announcement this evening is just for the notification of the board that our second annual Thought Exchange Join the Conversation process will launch tomorrow afternoon with the Share Step. So you remember, we used Thought Exchange a couple times before, and it starts with the Share Step where people have an opportunity to provide free-form comments to some basic questions. We use three questions. You know, what are things you have concerns about for the school district? What are things you appreciate about the school district? And are there any questions that you have about the school district? So that Share Step will launch tomorrow. It will be open for about a week. Then we take a week off, and the Thought Exchange, people do their magic behind the scenes, and then we launch the Star Step closer to the holiday break. And so again, that will be open for about a week. And then, of course, we'll have the Discovery Step after the first of the year with you, where we'll have a teleconference with the folks from British Columbia and share with you the results. I'm particularly excited to see if some of the same themes come up this year that came up last year, and of course, some of the themes that rose last year certainly end up in our strategic plan. So just for people at home and for board members know that tomorrow, the Thought Exchange process will kick off in the afternoon. And finally, we celebrated American Education Week last Wednesday specifically with the annual Staff Appreciation Breakfast, and there were three honorees that I want to share with you. First, we want to congratulate Northfield High School Social Studies teacher Sarah Swan McDonald, who was named the Teacher of the Year for the Northfield School District. Deb Bedeen, Deb Bedeen, excuse me, was named the, of Northfield High School, was named the Educational Assistant of the Year, and Gary DeGroot was honored as the Friend of Education. So it's always a, really a fun event to honor people for their great work, and we congratulate the award winners and thank Heather Kahanka and Erin Bailey and Amy Siev and all the people who worked to put together the, the American Education Week program. So those are your announcements and recognitions for this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. Do board members have anything they'd like to add to that? Rob?
Kind of an announcement, just that next, I think it's next Friday at 7:00, December 9th, is the Torch Poetry Slam at the high school auditorium, so everyone should attend that. It's great, it was great last year, the first year, and I'm sure it'll be great again this year.
Yeah, it was really a great event. Okay, thank you. So is the second board meeting of the month, so we do have the School Board Members Committee Reports. That's where board members are, give the opportunity to update other board members on committees that they act as school board liaisons. So our, we have two this evening. Our first, Ellen Iverson, along with Fritz and Margaret, will report on the D-PAC meeting.
Sure. So I thought, board members are probably really familiar with how D-PAC operates and what we do, but last, this last meeting was a little different in that we just did presentations. We didn't break into our subcommittees, and we heard two really good presentations. One was from Carrie Duba, and she was giving sort of the early, early findings that, as they're looking into social-emotional learning curriculum, and sort of what I outlined here in the report is the basis for how they're looking at the curriculum. And she mentioned there's about six, narrowed it down to about half dozen that they're going to be investigating further, but I think board members should just stay tuned because we'll hear more about that as that comes through this year. It's pretty exciting, actually, that we're, that they're able to find a curriculum that can go K through 12, some, with some overlaps, and that in all of the curriculum, there's really a distinction between the elementary and then the secondary schools. And then the other piece was that Dr. Hillman presented the strategic plan, and we, as you know, we have community members that are at D-PAC, but the other piece I wanted board members to be aware of is that we're, D-PAC is evaluating the structure and organization of D-PAC. Dr. Hillman had asked the D-PAC to consider whether we should be better aligned to the, from the strategic plan to our near-term priorities. So no decisions were made at D-PAC. It was, members asked some questions about some of the things that have been suggested about near, either keeping our existing structure, which is the three committees of teaching and curriculum assessment and student support services, or moving to the near-term priorities. So Fritz or Margaret, do you have anything that?
Excellent. Board members have any questions on the, this was actually the, I had meant to say the November 21st D-PAC meeting. So does anyone have any questions? I had one question. First of all, very exciting that Carrie Duba is leading the charge because she's extremely knowledgeable on this, and so I agree, it's really exciting to see us moving along the social-emotional curriculum. Is there an actual committee, or is it just Carrie doing it at this point?
So what we started with is actually several years ago, the D-S-S-T, and I don't even remember what that stands for frankly, but it's basically the schools helping professionals. So it's school social workers, school psychologists, that group of people who, several years ago, actually did some initial research. And then this summer and this fall, as it became very apparent out of all of our strategic planning sessions that this was going to be a very important thing for us to look at, nearly every session, teachers, parents, students, people brought up social-emotional health in one way, shape, or form. So Director of Teaching and Learning, Mary Hansen, I asked her to talk with Carrie as a person who's on that team and come back to the D-S-S-T to resurrect that research that they had done several years ago. And really, what we want them to do to begin with is simply to pare down some of the choices. Once they have those choices, you know, basically to about a half dozen, as Ellen said, what they will do is they will start grouping, reaching out and talking with other folks throughout the district and really form more of a curriculum team to take a look at that, who will then make recommendations. We want it to be a very broad-based grassroots process, but we felt it was important that the people who are experts in that particular field had a chance to take a look at the curriculum that's on the market and to look at what would potentially work for us here. So it's, as you said, early step one, and Carrie's really just been the spokesperson for that particular committee. But they are just doing some basic research, narrowing down the choices, and then plan to talk with staff in much greater detail as we get into the new year.
Excellent, thank you. Great report. Okay, our second report, Rob Hardy, on the Human Rights Commission.
Okay, so this was in the table file, so I'll just read it so that people who didn't get it can hear what it says. "Human Rights Commission met on Thursday, November 10th, and heard numerous concerns from Northfield residents about the outcome of the election and about an increase in incidence of harassment and intimidation. The HRC joined in organizing a community meeting at St. Dominique's on Sunday, November 13th, to hear the concerns of the Latino community and to provide information on the efforts of the city and school district to protect the rights of all members of the community." And Mayor-elect Pownell spoke there, and Superintendent Hillman spoke. Another meeting was held at City Hall on Monday, November 14th, to discuss specific actions, including a resolution that was passed at the Tuesday, November 15th, City Council meeting, to affirm Northfield's commitment to be a safe, inclusive, and welcoming community to all. The meeting at City Hall, prior to that City Council meeting, was attended by three members of the Human Rights Commission, three members of the City Council, the police chief, the deputy police chief, representative of Northfield HCI, the city administrator, and members of the Latino community. After the meeting at City Hall, a member of the HRC and I met with Dr. Hillman, who reaffirmed the commitment of the Northfield Public Schools to be a safe and inclusive learning community where every student is valued. I've been to the high school a number of times since November 8th and spoken to a number of students in the EL class who have expressed concern about the future, and I've spoken to other members of the community who are concerned about the possibility of incidents of harassment and intimidation and hate crimes, basically. And I think we just need to be aware as a district of that possibility and be, have a procedure for addressing those possible incidents. But I spoke to Principal Lear last week, and he expressed his pride in how mature and supportive students at the high school have been in the weeks following the election. And I think this is a time when the efforts in Northfield pride and social-emotional learning and the kind of supportive community we are trying to create, really, those results show themselves and pay their dividends. So I think we're doing pretty well, but I think we continue to have to be vigilant and supportive of everyone in the community.
Excellent report. Any comments or questions on Rob's report on the Human Rights Commission? Okay, thank you. All right, so we will move forward then with items for discussion and reports. Up again will be Hope Langston and Mary Grace Hansen to answer any questions regarding the 2015-16 World's Best Workforce Plan that we just heard a very thorough presentation at the public hearing. So board members, I will open it up to questions or comments. Ellen?
So I had one question. It's right before, on the slides, it's before Goal Four, it's your what's next slide?
Mm-hmm.
And that was the one where you were explaining how you changed the goal going forward to be an on-track goal, which is different, and I was wondering if you, could you just explain it one more time because I didn't quite understand?
Yes. That would be in our achievement gap reduction.
Mm-hmm.
MDE tracks on, they actually report on-track performance on the report card, so it's public data. Sometimes I'll get random questions from both parents and teachers asking about that piece of information that's there. Just to revisit, it is, okay, so you become labeled on-track, so that's, that's an MDE label, if you are a proficient student who is making medium or high growth. So again, it's, it's talking about their Z scores because their research has shown that proficient students who are medium or high-growth performers continue to stay proficient. And you are also labeled on-track if you are a non-proficient student who makes high growth because their research shows that students who are not proficient but are making high growth will attain proficiency in a shorter term. So again, we think it's a more comprehensive measure than a, an MDE-generated target that came up and is due in 2017 that clearly the majority of districts in the state are not going to meet.
Thanks, that's helpful. Okay, board members, other questions or comments? Go ahead, Rob.
Oops, I have a bunch of questions and a comment, but I might save the comment till later.
Yeah, go ahead.
First question is, when you say the Northfield School District will decrease the FRP, LEP, and Hispanic math proficiency gaps by 3% and reading proficiency gaps by 6%, that's on page four, whatever slide that is, I'm just wondering how those gaps are calculated, what grades are involved, what assessments, I mean, what goes into calculating the gap?
So that's that magical MDE calculation based on their goal that by 2017, the entire state was going to close their achievement gaps. So it was based on, in all grade levels, and it, their starting point was your 2013 reading proficiency rates for each of the groups and your 2011 math rates because that's when the standards changed. They literally subtracted that proficiency rate from 100, cut it in half, and said that's what you need to do by 2017. So it was a calculation that they believed was attainable for, for districts, and so this goal last year, because last year was the first year for World's Best Workforce, they said you must have a SMART goal, and here, we're going to give you some guidance on how to write that SMART goal. That's how we came up with that.
Okay. And then another question is about just the wording of the goals because you have, for example, on career and college readiness, you have two goals, which are 80% of Northfield students and 70, 80, 70% of students, so there's like a total number of students. But then there's another goal, which is on the ACT composite readiness, which is increasing the percentage by 6%. So you've got kind of different percentages or different ways of getting at the goal. And you mentioned with third-grade reading proficiency that you changed it from an increase percentage to a total number of students percentage, I think, and so I'm just wondering how you decide, at what point do you decide, do we move from, we move from increase or decrease percentage to a total number of students percentage, and wouldn't it be better just to have consistency and have it be the total number of students?
I think you raise a good point. Do you want to talk to that, Mary?
It's, when we were talking about especially the third-grade reading, we wanted to include all students and make it 80% of all, of all of our kids rather than just increase by 3% or 6%. The ACT is a little bit different because not all students will take that, so.
The other issue is that when we sat down with Matt to discuss this, and we really wanted to look at aligning these goals to the, to the new strategic plan, you know, when we talk about a robust core curriculum and equitable opportunity for career and college choices, they need to be able to read to do that, and our system can function optimally when 80% of our kids are reading. Our RTI system can function, our MTSS system can function. So we really, we're moving away in that measure from the state sort of, I'm going to say arbitrary target goal that we clearly were not going to meet. We could have kept that goal, but instead, we, we chose to align with the strategic plan. The ACT and the AP are not required component goals. We, we add those in just to give a broader context of career and college readiness in our district. If the state, the state would be perfectly content if we listed eighth-grade math, and that was it. I expect that with ESSA coming into play, new state legislature, we're going to be given a whole new round of targets. I'm pretty sure that's coming down the pipeline as soon as they can get their ducks in a row. So we were looking for something that actually was meaningful to us as a district, and that's how we landed on, on those goals.
And I think, Rob, too, as you look at it, there are some goals that are more driven in formula by the department's template, reading, you know, third-grade reading being one of those. And then there are others that, for example, if we look at, that the state is saying that the best way to measure career and college readiness is the eighth-grade MCA, I have a number of issues with that. You know, I understand why they selected, I mean, I get the practicality of it, but the goals, I actually think if you look at the goals that we added, I think that they are actually stronger and more meaningful to us than those that were imposed, you know, by this World's Best Workforce legislation. Again, we have to remind ourselves that it was passed in the dead of night, on the last day of the session. No one would disagree with any of the goals that we've set here, but I think some of the difference in how you write the goals is that we've learned over the years what MDE will accept and what they won't, and the ones that we have more flexibility over, I think we tailor to our needs, more so than what the formula-driven piece is at the state. And in addition, I think, as you said, the original one was arbitrarily set by the state based upon the waiver, if you think about it. And I do think that everything we're hearing coming out of ESSA is going to be that the waiver really kind of set us up for, for how we will meet some of the ESSA requirements should they be implemented. We're now hearing they might delay implementation of that again. But I think when you think about for a district to look at a total goal, 80% aligns with a number of the different pieces that we believe are appropriate, and frankly, I think most of us would agree that it's very reasonable and attainable for 80% of our students to be reading well by the end of grade three. And if we know that those 80% are reading well by the end of grade three, we have other tools to be able to help those 20% who still aren't, just aren't there yet. We know that they still can make it, but they're not there yet, and if you're reading at grade level by the end of grade three, the jury is not out on this. The, the research doesn't suggest, it clearly states that kids who are on track reading by the end of grade three are very successful as they finish their high school career and leave us. So looking at that, that we want 80%, I think is attainable over a few years, and it's a piece that I think is really a rallying cry for us.
I was just interested, I'm kind of related to that. I mean, it's interesting that where you kind of see problems are at third grade, but then you get to graduation rate and ACT performance, and everything seems to, you know, kind of work out in the end, so I'm just wondering why there's like this problem in the middle, but things look good, and also kindergarten readiness looks good, so both ends look good, but in the middle, things don't look so good.
I think we have to be careful about graduation rates. We can graduate kids not necessarily with a skill set that we desire them to have, and that's certainly an ongoing conversation, not only in Minnesota, but all across the country right now. And then the second piece with the ACT is, you know, when I showed you that one graph where the state, the class of 2016, I just want to remind you that that was an average score, and again, for us, average means one thing. I pay closer attention to the percentage of kids meeting the college-ready benchmark, and there you actually see quite a strong alignment of MCA performance and meeting the college readiness benchmark in reading. So that is not necessarily as strong as we like it. That's why that high school team is working so diligently on improving the percentage of students hitting the college readiness benchmark in reading. I did not highlight it here, I'm happy to share that information with anyone, but there, that's certainly an opportunity for growth for us as well.
Should I make my general comment or let someone else speak first?
No, go ahead. You can make your comment, and then we'll move on to.
Well, I just, I realized that the World's Best Workforce Report is a state requirement, and you don't have any input on that, but it just, I just want to express my discomfort with the fact that it's the World's Best Workforce because, well, I encourage you to look at a recent report by the Century Foundation titled, "Putting Democracy Back Into Public Education." The report opens by pointing out that Americans have historically, quote, "pivoted between whether the central priority of public education should be to create skilled workers for the economy or to educate young people for responsible citizenship." The report concludes that in recent decades, public education has shifted from supporting the institutes of, institutions of democracy to promoting the interests of a market economy. The report states, "Today, we are seeing the cost of an unbalanced approach to public education that focuses on markets far more than democracy, dangerously lowers levels of civic knowledge and a reduced faith in democratic, democratic values among Americans." For example, in a recent study titled, "Evaluating Information, the Cornerstone of Civic Online Reasoning," researchers at Stanford University Graduate School of Education found that a majority of middle schoolers were unable to distinguish between real news and fake news. In a digital age and in a school environment in which all students are equipped with an iPad, critical thinking skills, including the ability to evaluate sources, are critical to educating and informed citizenry and maintaining a strong democracy. These are things we should be emphasizing and assessing along with the development of a skilled workforce, critical thinking, civic knowledge, and civic engagement on the part of our students. Of course, many of the components of the World's Best Workforce Report, such as third-grade reading, provide important benchmarks toward the goal of creating an informed citizenry. But signaling that our goal is the World's Best Workforce is misplaced emphasis, I think, and creates an unbalanced picture of the purpose of public education. So that's just my general statement about this whole process.
Great, thank you. So other questions or comments?
I have a question regarding third slide. It says 75% of the incoming kindergarten students will be academically and behaviorally ready for kindergarten, and it's, to me, it's a difficult question to ask, and, but the question is, it seems like less of a public school issue and more of a community issue.
Agreed.
And that's one reason why we're so aligned with Northfield Promise?
Yes.
And working with them because they have a pre-K readiness team.
So I would expect we should get a gold star, and I'm not being facetious on this, if the question were, we have an opportunity for all students to be able to participate in programs that'll give them proficiency as incoming students. Then I think we should get a gold star. But I do think that's a parental responsibility and a community responsibility, and I'm glad we're getting a gold star for it, but I don't, you know, I'm willing to accept a school can be held accountable for the students in the classroom, but I think it's difficult for the school to be held accountable for the students who are in the home.
Right, and one of the reasons we do the fast assessment is so that we know if they're coming in ready and who would need some intervention right away.
So it's not a measure of achievement, it's much more a measure of knowing?
Kindergarten readiness.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, then I read it wrong. Thanks for the update. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Margaret?
I agree with Rob's statement, just to echo that, sorry. Numbers are not my strong point, that's why we have Hope and Mary. Am I, am I reading this right, that one of the goals we have is to decrease a gap in math, okay? And, but then when I look a couple slides later, I see that our eighth-grade MCA math trends are trending down in all groups. So are we going to close that gap by having all the kids drop there? I mean, that's a danger, correct?
That's a great question, so you do know your numbers, don't you?
Yes.
Yeah, you can close a gap one of two ways. You can raise the bottom or you can lower the top. We obviously don't want to lower the top, we want to raise the bottom, and it's something that our staff is working really hard on, but yes, that.
So by wording it by decreasing the gap, we run the danger of decreasing it by having everybody do poorly?
Yes.
Okay.
And in fact, in the Region 10 data, that's exactly what I saw.
Hmm, okay.
I just also need to remember, Margaret, that the gap part, that's one of the things that's required. You know, that's not a language of a goal that we selected, that's a language of a goal. We agree with the concept, but it's the language of the goal that the state has required.
But can we state that we'll decrease the gap by increasing proficiency?
Well, essentially, that's what we want to do, we want to increase proficiency.
Right.
And interestingly enough, when they, when they grade our report, last year, we were cited for not having a number-specific SMART goal to improve our graduation rate. You know, we said maintain or exceed 90%, we feel like that's, that's a good, strong number to remain at, and we were cited for that, so we had to pick a number this year. And so we've learned along the way what MDE requires as well, and the gap, the gap goals are generated by them to be written in a format that, that they essentially approve. But I think you raised a good point.
And thank you for putting all this together again, based on the state mandate that was passed in the dark of night, so.
Other questions? Ellen?
So I had a comment and then a request, so I wanted to echo what Margaret- So, I wanted to echo what Margaret said, and thank you, Hope, and Mary, and particularly for giving us the disaggregated data and the context. I know this was a lot of work. And so, my request is, I was hoping that maybe we could get a copy of, I know we have the slides in this format, but they're hard to read. If we could get like the, maybe one slide per page, sort of, just electronically and that would...
We went back and forth on that, didn't we, Dinaida?
No, thank you for conserving the paper, but electronically, exactly.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And actually, we'll be on the website.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Fritz, you have a question?
Yeah, and you may well not have an answer to this, but is there a going hypothesis of what happened with the eighth-grade proficiency numbers declining? Is that a, just statistical...
As a district or as a region?
As a district.
In math?
In math. Is that just statistical noise or demographic shift or...
I think part of, I know what they're really working on is going back to the standards and make sure that they are covering them all in the sequence that is necessary prior to the MCA. They have also, that team has made really good use of the benchmark reports which have, that were put out by the MDE, which shows us standard by standard how our kids are performing compared to what they would expect it to be performed, performing in a statistical model. So, I think they, they're going back to the standards and making sure that they are covering them and reteaching them.
But there's not really a hypothesis of why it got reversed?
They, well, they believe they have to make some adjustments. So, they're testing that hypothesis this year. So, they think that they needed to make some adjustments in how they cover the standards and in what sequence.
Because the cohort was different that year?
Well, if you look on, it's been a multi-year trend.
So, they've been trying experiments?
Yes.
Got it. So, they're trying successive things that aren't working, and they're just going to keep trying until the trend reverses? That makes sense?
Yes, because we've talked a lot about 2012. If you look at 2012 for math, that was a great year for us. And we actually, well, the state was up, but we were way above the state that year. And we've gone round and round of that, because I'm like, guys, what did you do in 2012? Well, that was a year you could take the MCA three times. So, what did they do? They made sure they covered those standards. And so, they, again, this is not a cohort issue that they see. This is a trend that they've been wanting to adjust, and they're doing it by going back to the standards themselves, so.
Thanks.
Ms. Shannon?
Yes, Margaret. I'm sorry, is it, refresh my memory, is it the MCAs or the maps that the kids know doesn't apply? Do you remember?
Well, the high school kids know the MCA doesn't apply.
And I'm wondering, that's starting to slip down to eighth graders.
Hmm, I'm not...
Over those years.
They take it pretty seriously.
Do they?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a 10th and 11th grade issue.
Yeah, okay.
And I think if you were to look at the map data, my guess, Hope, you've looked at the map data. Does the map data agree with this, or is there a discrepancy?
In the middle school level, we're pretty on the money for what our map, our map performance, we have predictor scores, so you can take the fall map scores, and we can generate a report that tells us how our eighth graders are predicted to do on the MCA. And at the middle school level, it's been pretty spot-on.
If you were to see different results...
Yeah, that would tell.
Right, absolutely. Other questions, comments? Okay. I had, Jeff, do you have one?
No, I was going to say that, you know, whether, to Rob's point, I mean, education versus vocation, and yeah, we can do them both, but I think it's never too young to ask a kid, you know, what do you want to do when you grow up? And to facilitate whatever that skill set is, whatever that vision is, whatever that dream is, and help them stay on focus to get there, yeah, there's a lot of skills that they need along the way. But whether they're a teacher, a banker, or a doctor, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, that they're ready, you know, when they get to that point, so.
And have choice.
And have a choice.
Okay, I'll just wrap up with two quick questions. Again, echo thanks from everyone for this incredible report. So, you alluded to the fact that you might have a behavior breakout for kindergarten, like you did last year, because I thought that was super interesting.
Right. We're part of the Kindergarten Entrance Profile Grant from MDE, so we get to use the FAST assessments for free in kindergarten. And this year, they are not collecting SABR's data, so they dropped it from our menu of choices. But we were able to find the questions and put them in a Google form. And every kindergarten teacher, we checked you Sunday, actually, and every kindergarten teacher has completed it, so we'll be able to get that data.
Great, thank you. And then I was going to ask about the Tier One Fidelity Grant, what your initial impressions of the work that that might do. I know it involves a lot of personnel district-wide, and whether you feel like, you know, where that's headed and where that might work to our advantage.
Right. Well, we had the first at the end of September, beginning of October, to complete the fidelity grant. And then, like I said, this week, we will be meeting with the teams to go over the data that we generated and see what action steps will be put in place as a result of the collected data.
Okay.
And we will need twice more after that, in February and in April.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then my last question, the pre-ACT we just did, that the 10th graders did, how do you see that fitting in with career and college-ready benchmarks?
I'm thrilled that they have it back, and I wish they would bring back the Explore, because we got some great information from that. So, I think, again, depending on how this all changes in this, in the coming years, we certainly will use that pre-ACT information in the district. I'm not sure that it would be part of this, because it's not a, the assessments they want us to use in this are the ones that they mandate that we give. They used to pay for PLAN, they used to pay for Explore, they don't anymore. The pre-ACT is optional for districts as well.
Okay, good. Thank you. And then my last comment, it would be really great if MDE would really stay with that on-track evaluation and allow us to report that more often, because I agree that that seems like a good one.
It's all being looked at under ESSA.
Well, and that raises another question of what will actually happen with ESSA.
Right. Thank you.
Oh, moving target. All right, thank you very much. So, okay, good. Good discussion and good report. So, let's move on to our next item for discussion, which is the 2016 audit. Is Craig here? Okay, good. I didn't see him.
Couldn't see Craig hiding behind the screen.
Well, I was actually thinking about Craig, because I thought if all of last night's rain would have meant snow, Craig probably would not have been here today. Or today's rain.
No, I don't know. It's kind of like Santa Claus, it's the season, so. Right. I'm Craig Popenhagen, I'm here to talk about your audit results for 2016.
Just scroll down to the doc. It's loaded in my...
There it is. It looks like it. Bottom right. There we go. All right. Well, thank you. I'll kind of start off with just a little bit of a synopsis of the audit results that we have for you, before I jump into the charts and the graphs. I'll just have a few of those to walk through with you tonight. But overall, the audit opinion, again, this year was a clean opinion, so we're, no qualifications on the accounting, on the numbers, on the disclosures. We were comfortable that those are presented correctly in accordance with accounting principles, along with looking at auditing the numbers. We look at internal control processes as well. Happy to report we have no findings on internal controls. We also perform a compliance audit under the, now the uniform grant guidance on your federal programs, and otherwise known as a single audit. And the program that we audited this year was the Child Nutrition Cluster, and that resulted in no findings. We go through a series of audit programs that the State Auditor's Office publishes and updates on an annual basis, and we call that Minnesota Legal Compliance. So, it's basically testing compliance with certain statutes and laws in the state. That was clean as well, so no findings there. And lastly, we have to do a compliance audit on student activity funds. And I have no findings there either. So, as far as audit results or reportable items, it's a very, fairly boring report, because there's no findings. We had no audit adjustments and did not have any likewise past adjustments, so to the best of our knowledge and ability, everything that needed to be recorded and adjusted was recorded and adjusted, not for lack of, not for lack of trying to find something, right, Val? But, but no, very, just a very nice, very nice clean audit. Administratively, you're running a very good shop here, keeping things in check and under control, so we like to see that. Now, I'll jump into some charts and graphs, and we'll run through just a few of these. And these relate to the General Fund, so the General Fund is the main operating fund of the district. So, this is where most of the education occurs and is funded. Top-line revenues for the General Fund was just over $48 million, about 48.1 million. Expenditures came in at $46.4 million, added about 1.7 million to fund balance in the General Fund. So, about 3.5% of top-line revenues were added to fund balance this year. Now, that being said, you do have about 4.2 million or so set aside in an assignment of fund balances, and most of that you've set aside for severance and insurance premiums related to that, about $200,000 related to special education, and about another $50,000 kind of set aside for a couple other special items. Operating capital, your goal there is kind of a minimum fund balance, this is one of the restricted categories, but a minimum fund balance of $600,000. You're at about $869,000, and that, I believe, what your plan is now going into the next year is you'll be purchasing some curriculum and textbooks and things like that. So, you'll be putting that, those dollars to use. Overall, kind of what resulted in financially these results is you're adding students to your student body. About 46 or so pupil units added to the enrollment in 2016. That kind of comes onto the heels of about a 40-student add in the 2015 year. So, with that brings about $6,000 in additional state aid funding coming into the district, as well as just a general formula aid increase in 2015 was about $117 per pupil unit. So, you're growing the top-line revenues at a little bit faster clip than expenditures. What that means is financially, you're in a healthy financial position. So, just a few pie charts here. First one is the General Fund revenues, just kind of looking at the distribution of the revenue sources and where the funding comes from. About 73.8% comes from state sources, about 20% from property taxes. What that compares to, you can kind of see the differential here, but the 48 million in revenues in 16 compared to 15, about just under 46. The other thing that kind of went through 2016 is the state of Minnesota made a contribution to the Teachers Retirement Association Pension Plan on the district's behalf. And the state did this for all of the districts in the state, but because of the accounting requirements around that, we have to treat that basically as a flow-through in your financial statements. So, we have to reflect a revenue and an expense of the same amount related to that contribution. So, net bottom line, there's no impact on the bottom line there. But it does, it is enough to kind of change the percentages on the state aid portion in 2016. That flow-through contribution was $526,000 in 2016. In the prior year, it was about 58. So, percentage-wise, that's enough to move those percentages a little bit. So, some of that, 48 million, keep in mind about half a million dollars of that is inflow revenue, and then when we jump to 2016 expenses, that same half a million dollars is running through as an outflow expense. About 82% of the General Fund expenditures go to the classroom, so that is instruction and support. You can kind of see, well, maybe you can see the breakdown, but of the 82%, about 50% is regular instruction, kind of classroom-rated instruction, kind of the normal K-12 curriculum. Vocational's about 0.6%. Special education is the other large item, that's about 20% of the 46 million. Otherwise, administration holds pretty steady at about 10%. And compared to 2015, holding steady at that same 10% is what you see there. So, with the contract settlements that you hand with the faculty, the compensation increase was about 4% in 2016 over 2015. But that was by, basically by design. So, at the end of the day, your distribution of expenses is very similar, funding sources are somewhat similar, albeit the numbers are a little bit bigger. So, that is...
Craig, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
As I looked at the colors on the charts, to me, it looks like the sites and buildings is at about 10.6%, and administration was about the 4.5%.
Yep. Sorry about that.
We want to lean ship.
Want to make sure we...
We want to get credit for that.
Get that distribution.
Thank you. That's a key correction.
Very good. So, I think, you know, just a very good audit, I think these are good results for you, and if there's questions, we can certainly entertain some questions, or I'll turn the meeting back to you.
Okay. Board members, questions or comments for Craig? Rob?
The pension money you mentioned, that's just a flow-through, that has no impact at all on the fund balance, because it just goes all the way through.
Correct, it does not. It's an in and an out.
Other questions or comments? Margaret?
This is just purely visual. Can you just give me the percentages? I'm having a tough time reading it here and up there. Like, administration is what? I can't even see what color that is.
Yep, 3.6.
3.6.
Right.
Okay. And then the instruction was 82.
Yep.
District support is 2.7?
That's 2.7.
And the sites and buildings are 10.6?
Do you want the fiscal 16 percentages?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty similar.
That is fiscal 16, isn't it?
That was 15. They do the comparison, Margaret, between the two years, yep.
Yeah, I'm looking at the first of the two comparisons. The first is 2.5. Pie charts?
Yeah, if you look at that, it's 82% is instruction and other support, 10.6% sites and buildings, 4.5% is administration, 0.3% is fiscal and other costs, and 2.7% is district support.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments, board members have meant?
First of all, clean audit, no findings, is pretty remarkable. So, we've been talking a lot about context, Craig. So we've been talking a lot about context, Craig, so not to give up on your other, you know, clients, but I know it's not unusual to have a no findings report, but it is not usual. So how often do you see that with the clients that you serve?
I would guess, estimate probably one in ten.
So I knew the answer to the question before I asked it because-
Right.
This is really a remarkable piece, and for an entity with forty-six million dollars in expenditures, these auditors come in and they twist and they turn and they dig because that's what we pay them to do, because we need a neutral third party to come in to make sure that we are being good stewards of our community's dollars. No findings is remarkable, and it's due to a lot of work. Val Murdaugh Storey from the finance team are very intentional. In fact, you think about it, almost every school district, the number one place where you see findings is in student activity accounts. It's because there's a whole bunch of moving parts. Well, if you remember, a few years ago, it was routine for us to have at least one of those years, and Craig would say, pretty minimal, not a huge deal. But Val corrected her process, and we've not had a finding since. And so the key thing, I think, for the public to know is that we have a first-rate finance team who is making sure that we're following the rules and regulations, and the trust level for how the district handles its finances, I think is pretty remarkable. So we really need to give Val a lot of credit for the work that she's done, because sometimes when she puts those processes into place, it doesn't make a lot of people happy, and that's okay, we understand that there's a reason to it, and she does a great job of explaining that, but when you get this kind of audit, all of those things are worth it because this is telling the public, yes, these people know what they're doing, they do it well, and they do it by the book, and that, we appreciate that. I think the other piece from this report that I would be remiss to not to point out, Craig, if you could go back two slides, please? Because we look at a lot of the expenditures here, but the revenue is really important. And I just want to go back to that seventy-three point five percent of our revenue comes from the state legislature. So we are gearing up for another legislative session, and we can do lots of things locally. You know, there's a lot of people with good intentions who are really hard locally to bring us other dollars through our operating levies, through our grants, all those kinds of things. However, when it comes to the end of the day, even the feds, who we talk a lot about, only contribute two point four percent of our revenue. We have to be vigilant about the legislature, and the basic per pupil operating formula is what we have to focus on. That is what generates the dollars that come to us to be able to provide the programming that we do. And so it is really essential for us to make sure that we understand that. We can talk a lot about local stuff, but in Minnesota, it's one of two state constitutional responsibilities, funding roads and a uniform system of schools. And we all have to be active citizens in making sure the legislature knows that public school funding, particularly in the per pupil basic formula, I'll even take the special education formula because that is indexed, right? And every dollar that we get from the state on special ed gives us another dollar in general fund because the cross subsidy is?
Three million.
Three million plus. So the fact is, those two things, as we think about the upcoming legislative session, are going to be really important. So the audit looks at the expenditures mostly, but I think it's really important that we take this moment as we're getting ready for January in a legislative session to look at where the revenue comes from, and making sure that St. Paul knows that we're going to expect them to continue to increase that per pupil basic formula.
Okay, thank you. Board members, other comments or questions?
No, well, thank you, Craig, to you and your team for the work that you guys do. You've been doing it for us for several years, and we really appreciate it. And then I'm sure I speak on behalf of the board when I echo Dr. Hulman's congratulations and efforts on Val and her team, because it's a pretty incredible audit, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, and thank you for letting us be of service.
Okay, so we will move on to our next item for discussion and report. We have two school improvement plan presentations, Bridgewater and Sibley. I'm not sure who's going first. Oh, Nancy's getting up, so it looks like Bridgewater. I don't know if that means you won the rock, paper, scissors, or you lost.
Yeah, it wasn't arm wrestling, trust me. I would lose.
All right, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share with you our site improvement plan. Let's see, and Hope's going to be, that'd be great. Go ahead. All right, obviously, we've been working hard this year. We've got a great group of people on staff. I'm really pleased with the group of teachers and students and parents that we've got working with us, all in one endeavor. And tonight, we want to share our successes and some of our challenges as we work to improve academic and social outcomes for all of our students at Bridgewater, not just one or another, but all of our little cherubs. If we take a look at last year's goals, we purposely developed one academic goal last year, and that was that we wanted eighty percent of our students to demonstrate mastery of literacy and math standards as indicated by a score of eighty percent or higher on our quarterly common assessments in reading and math. Our results of that were that we had an average of seventy-one percent in reading and eighty percent in math. So obviously, we had a little discrepancy there, and still working on things in the area of reading. Our climate goal is where we wanted ninety percent of our students to receive no more than one fix-it plan, and that's a behavior plan for our students for the entire school year. The result of that were we had eighty-seven percent of our students that received no more than one fix-it plan. And obviously, we'd like to have students receive zero fix-it plans, but we know that part of the job we have is to teach students how to behave, teaching students right from wrong, and that's a job we take very seriously. We have three other goals. In those three goals, when we looked at that at the end and we did the thought exchange, the survey results and these three goals did not match up, so we need to look at ways that we can further align those. We've had those in place before, but again, when we take a look at thought exchange, like I said, we just need to piece that together so that it's more closely aligned. Some of the things that we're really proud of this year, our grade-three MCA reading and math proficiency improved for the third year in a row, and it was the highest in the district. We're very proud of our students and staff, especially at the third grade level. Our Hispanic reading pass rate continues to increase, it was well above the state average at fifty-eight point three percent, whereas the state average was thirty-seven point six percent. While our FRP pass rate remains well above the state average in both reading and math, we still want to continue working for improvement in that demographic. We're also very proud of our first grade team, who saw eighty percent of their students meet their fall-to-spring math growth in reading and math. That's huge. Eighty percent is a huge target, especially for first grade. Things we're going to continue working on, we want to address the core reading curriculum needs to ensure that there are no gaps in student learning as they move through our building and obviously through the district, and allow for a sustainable intervention and NHTSA support system. Again, we want positive math and reading Z scores for all students. We want all of them to grow academically, not just one subgroup or another. This year, we're working on grade-level goals designed to address specific needs, and one other area that we want to always continue working on is the area of transparency. We want to be transparent about our results and our needs for growth and celebration of our successes. Our teachers need to know their data if instructional change is going to occur. We can't hide their data from them. Things that we learned from last year's goals. First of all, it was our intention to have staff and students focus on mastery of reading and math standards in a shorter feedback cycle rather than waiting for the entire year. Our hypothesis was that this approach would lead to increased proficiency on the bigger assessments such as the MCA and the MAP. If they could meet the smaller targets along the way, they should be on track to meet the MCA and the MAP goals. Successful implementation of our common formative assessments requires time, staff, and financial resources for summer work to develop, refine, and monitor. This process must be ongoing, and right now, we found that we couldn't sustain that with the system that we've got working. We don't have enough people in place to monitor that, and again, that time over the summer is extensive. With our climate goals, we learned that we need to reduce the number of goals we have to improve our focus and strategies, and again, we need to develop better ways to utilize the thought exchange feedback to improve our climate. When we look at our climate, one of the things that we really want to focus on is those relationships, building relationships not only with students but with parents as well. And that's huge, and getting to know all of the students in the building and knowing all the parents. I pride myself on trying to get to know all the students, at least by first name. I think I've got about seventy-five percent of them down, but there's always one or two of them that are hiding behind you that you have to pull out and find and ask what their name is. But I think it's really important, once you get to know them and they know that you know that you know them as a person, they tend to do better academically. And it comes back to that whole piece of the, you know, children don't learn from teachers they don't like, and that means you really do need to take the time to get to know them. So if we look at our goals this year, we sat down with, Hope and Inger and I sat down with every single grade level, and this was not easy work, but again, I think it was very purposeful work. With kindergarten, we took a look at where they were at. We have sixty percent of our kindergartners who were low-risk on their reading fast assessment and sixty-two percent on their math assessment this past fall. And so we in turn developed a goal with them, that the number of students in the low-risk category on the spring fast screener would be seventy-five percent in both reading and math. In grade one, well, again, last year, eighty percent of the first graders met their map growth target from fall to spring in reading, and eighty-one percent met their growth targets in math. So with their goal, we're going to leave them pretty steady, and we want the number of students meeting their fall-to-spring map target growth at eighty percent or higher. Who knows what that team's going to bring about? You never know. If you set a goal for them, I wouldn't be surprised if they crush that goal as well. For second grade, sixty-five percent of the second graders met their map growth targets from fall to spring in reading and fifty-one percent in math. So their goal for this year is that we would like seventy percent to meet their fall-to-spring map growth target in reading and sixty percent in math. For grade three, forty-five point seven percent of the class were predicted to pass the reading MCA, and sixty-seven percent were predicted to pass the math MCA. And if we look at the, actually, the pass rate was sixty-six point three percent in reading and eighty-one point two percent in math. So they kind of blew that one out of the water. So their goal for this year is the percentage of students outperforming the fall map predictor of proficiency will be more than twenty percent in reading and ten percent in math. So hopefully, they're going to perform well again this year. Fourth grade, when we looked at where the students were at, forty-two percent of our fourth grade students had positive Z scores on the reading MCA, and sixty-nine percent had positive Z scores on their math MCA. So again, their goal this year is that we would like the number of students meeting or exceeding the MCA target score based on prior year's scale score will be sixty percent in reading and seventy-five percent in math. For fifth grade, forty-six percent of the fifth grade students had positive Z scores on the reading MCA, and thirty-seven percent had positive Z scores on their math MCA. So their goal for this year is the number of students meeting or exceeding their MCA target score based on the prior year's scale score will be fifty-five percent in reading and fifty-five percent in math. I know that's a lot of numbers, but the reason we wanted to break it down is make it personal for each grade level, so they see, how can we meet this? If you leave it just being the MCAs, it doesn't have enough buy-in, especially for a kindergarten team or a first grade team. It takes a long time before they can get to that. If we break it down by the little chunks, again, if they can meet those little chunks along the way, we have a feeling that they can meet that high goal at the end. For our climate goals, last year, we wrote one hundred and sixty-eight fix-it plans, and that encompassed seventy-seven of our students, so therefore, again, we had eighty-seven percent of our students that received one or more fix-it plans. Again, our parent survey was given via the thought exchange but didn't specifically address our goals. So again, our two goals that we're working on for this year is we want ninety percent of our students to receive no more than one fix-it plan, and that's following our Bridgewater behavior guidelines. And then again, we're going to work on our conference attendance because we know that without our parents on board, we don't have a chance in meeting our academic goals that we have for all of our students. Some of our action steps that we're taking this year to meet our academic goals, again, short PLC goals, goals that are based on, could be based upon a unit at a time, could be based upon one quarter at a time, but not necessarily a full year, because if we find, if we wait till we get to the end of the year, what happens at that point if the students aren't meeting that goal? We don't have time to fix that versus if our goal is based upon a unit at a time, we know that we've got time to fix, we've got time to add that additional instruction, additional supports for our students. Again, the adoption of the Everyday Math Four. We've got full implementation of the Reading Street in grade four this year, which is huge. Our intervention process has been ramped up, especially we've got new members at the table with our student support team. Our STEAM initiatives, that's the science, technology, engineering, art, and math, some of you who have been in our building to see what our students are doing in terms of being good problem solvers, they're working together collaboratively. I know some of you were in when you have the opportunity to watch a first grade class taking what they had done in writing, and then they created their characters out of Play-Doh, and then used the stop-motion app on their iPad to actually animate their story, and then, of course, then they shared it too. And it's really exciting to listen to them share all the work they're doing. I never see our STEAM carts sitting quietly without being checked out, so that's been a wonderful addition, and I can't wait to see what our students can create. Again, teaching our kids to become thinkers, I think, is really important. When we look at some of the things that, when Mr. Cornell was talking about, giving kids choices for what they do in life, that's really what we want to do, making sure they have choices, so they know that it's not a one-size-fits-all, especially when it comes to a career. There are so many different things that they can do. But watching a really busy third grade student guide his Spiro down the hallway and talking with other kids and directing other kids because they're leaders, that's huge in terms of growth for those students. And again, teacher coaching and mentoring, we have Gail Cole as one of our teacher mentors this year. We also have Adam Danielson, who's doing work in terms of coaching and mentoring in the area of behavior. We've got Hope and Inger, who are doing coaching and mentoring in the area of instruction as well as behavior, and our social worker and school psychologists that are also working in areas of behavior. For our climate goals, some of our strategies, we've got parent events planned by grade-level teams. Every grade level has at least one parent event planned, some have four or more. Some of our character-building events for students, such as the Kindness Retreat and Dare. Community events, such as our Veterans Day Assembly and our Bus Driver Appreciation Breakfast. Last week, we had our grandparents' day. We had a full house all day long, even though the weather wasn't that great. It was just amazing to see that many grandparents coming through. One of the comments that I heard from one of the grandparents that I thought I'd never hear, that Grandpa stopped me, he says, "The teacher showed us how to use seesaw. She's got everything uploaded to the app. I need the QR code. Where'd you come from?" How exciting to, Grandpa wants QR code now. He's going to go home for Thanksgiving, ask his kids for QR codes. But really, a really neat celebration with all of our grandparents, and all the classroom teachers had different activities for grandparents to do. A year ago, they were focusing on showing grandparents what the kids were doing on iPads, because again, there's a population that may not know what are iPads all about? What do kids use them for? Are they just toys, or are they a tool? And so here's a way that grandparents can walk away knowing exactly what their grandkids are doing with our iPads and different equipment. Again, we want to continue monitoring fix-it plans and implement behavior interventions through our behavior specialists and through our student support team, and continue to communicate weekly with parents via the Skylark system. That's kind of what's going on over at Bridgewater, and know that you're always welcome anytime, and I would invite any questions at this time.
Okay, excellent presentation, thank you. So questions or comments for Nancy? Ellen?
So first, thank you for the presentation, and I'd encourage other board members that Nancy was nice enough to talk Fritz and I through the whole STEAM and get to observe some of the kids, and it's amazing what they're going to be able to get out of this programming at the elementary level. So my question, it might be more of a Hope question, actually. So I was really excited to see the grade-level goals for Bridgewater, and we've heard Greenville Park, and we're going to be hearing Sibley, and what I'm, having just heard, the world's best workforce is, when you look at these, how do you line them up with what we have for the world's best workforce? So we're using MCA for third grade reading, and then, you know, in Bridgewater, we're looking at, you know, some of the MAP measures and fall predictors, and how do you roll all that up together?
Again, we're trying to emphasize-
Again, we're trying to emphasize the stepping stones along the way, that the MCA will take care of itself in third grade if we do our job, K2 all the way through K3, teaching standards, to prepare them. One, one thing that I just wanted to add to that, the Common Assessment Form, that was actually our second year of the goal. And we do think that it, it was successful, but we do know, and staff would agree, that the amount of time and effort to create them, tweak them, study them, is enormous. And we just, we just felt like, as, in talking to our teams, that we could hit, hit those goals in a different way, still aligned with the world's best workforce of, everybody's gotta read by third grade. But we feel like the, the emphasis on growth for our students will, will get us there as well.
Great question. Other questions, comments? Fritz, or Fritz, you looking ready for Fritz and Rob?
So in this context, common assessments means the grade-by-grade, for example, map scores, or whatever, the, the grade levels decided what they want to use as the assessment? Not that they're writing their own assessments, but they're just, they're choosing.
Yeah, actually, some of them were writing.
Some of them were. Is that reflected here? I missed that.
That's, that's the summer work that they were, that I was talking about, is the fact that over the summer, they would work on creating their, creating their own common assessments.
And can you wave your hands in the air and describe what a common assessment, what a scratch-written common assessment might look like?
So we started with taking the staff back to their standards and doing a K5 team look at vertically aligning. Who, what do you cover down below? What do you cover up above? Down to the nitty-gritty of which prefixes are you covering in third grade? Because I'm gonna cover these in fourth grade, and you're gonna cover these in fifth grade. They, and then, from those standards that they chose, they actually either went out, because there's a lot of districts, obviously, have, who have common assessments already ready and prepared, tied to the common core in reading, or they, or they created their own. Fifth grade has been an exceptional team at creating and tweaking their own. They presented to you guys last year. For math, it's a little bit easier, because we have a curriculum, and they tend to use the unit tests. They may adjust them a little bit. But again, they were going back to the standards themselves to assess the mastery of those along the way.
But so in practice, those are, those are written tests?
Could be written, could be, we use the iPad a lot.
Rob, you had a question?
I'm looking at the deep, more detailed report here on the climate goals. On the very last page, number seven, where it talks about initiating PBIS with character trait of the month with monthly drawings, and then the resources are prizes and time. And this is kind of a general question, and I'm gonna go all Alfie Cone on you, and just ask about how giving out prizes prepares students for a world in which there aren't generally prizes for good behavior, and how you kind of balance giving candy or whatever for good behavior, and sort of creating intrinsic rewards for good behavior.
And our, yeah, our prizes are actually experiences.
Okay.
It could be extra recess, it could be taking the group and going outside and playing football with them at, for recess. Our prize last month was, they, they had, they had lunch with Mr. Danielson. So it's not, it's not a trinket. The, the prize is usually an experience.
Thanks.
Other questions, comments?
I have a couple. I just wanted to echo what Ellen said about the STEAM, and I was able to be there one day and watch it as well. And I think it's, what's so, I think it's just so wonderfully collaborative between your entire staff and the PTO. I mean, and, and so, kids working together on programs, but really how it's brought the, the whole building together in terms of putting that piece together. So it's just absolutely excellent.
Lots of fun.
What a great, great story. And then I had one question on, if you could comment on any initial impact the PALS positions had in your building?
I would say that in, in terms of students who are having behavior, behavior challenges that aren't, that aren't identified, that in need of services, they are actually getting some of the assistance they need. And in terms of monitoring the interventions, behavior interventions that are taking place, that has been, that has been huge. I tell you, he is, Adam has helped with so many more things than I ever thought possible. You know, when he's checking in, doing the daily check-ins with, with some of our kids that just need those daily check-ins, and following the students as opposed to, it's, at one point, you meet with them at this point, but not for a month later, he's able to follow up on a, either a daily basis or a weekly basis with them. So it's much more timely than it, than it was in the past.
Excellent, thank you. Dr. Hominy, a comment?
Yeah, I just have a couple of pieces. One, I just, I appreciated how you started the presentation, Nancy, with reflecting upon what you learned from last year. If you think about the school improvement planning process, the first step is to take stock of what we did compared to our goals last year and reflecting upon it. And I think that the format that's been used with this and the other presentations does that very well intentionally, takes a moment to reflect, so I really appreciate that. I also just want to echo the fact of talking about those short-cycle PLC goals. Those are things that we've seen in a couple of buildings throughout the district, and I think we're gonna see more movement to that, because I think that's what keeps you on track. When we used to set that goal for the end of the year, and then just waited and hoped, you know, that everything turned out, that was our best thinking at the time. But I know we've had several buildings in Bridgewater, is one of them that's moving to the shorter cycle, that more, the term is you wanna fail faster, right? And so, know what doesn't work, so you can get to the business of figuring out what works. I really appreciate that inclusion. And I, I just don't think we can underestimate, you know, we, what Rob had said before about the world's best workforce, you know, how these foundational skills also prepare people for that democratic society, and all of the different things, the choices that they want. And I, just the piece around, we, we hear a lot of things that people want public schools to do, and one of the latest things is we want coding for everyone, right? And that's, of course, that's not a bad thing. But I was in a classroom where I got a chance to see kids applying their mathematical skills that they've learned, and practicing that logical problem-solving with, what's the name of the mouse?
You mean the robotic mouse?
Yes. So it's, it's these small little mice that they basically can program, and they have to be able to think and add and subtract, and how they're gonna get, program the mouse to get through the maze. And so I think if you think about our goal of having strong foundational skills, and that, that very core basic piece, and then spiraling up to application of those skills, that is how those things fit together. The foundational skills moving to the application, it, this is really, really where we're wanting to go. And so, all of those different pieces together really are on the track of what I think our strategic plan is saying, right? We wanna make sure that kids are ready for college and career, and whatever pathway they choose. And in this case, what we've heard in this report, they're gaining the foundational skills, and they're having the chance to apply that knowledge, which we know leads to higher-order thinking skill development. So really pleased with that part of the report. Thank you to you and your team for your work at continuous improvement, because I think a lot of parts of this plan do show really an eye toward continuous improvement.
Well, thank you, and this, all this report belongs to my staff. This is the work they're doing. I just get to be the one to share it, so.
Yeah, that's a cool thing.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll move on to Sibley Elementary School's site improvement plan. Scott Sanders, building principal, with, I think, a few staff members.
Thank you. I don't need one, I'll just use this. All right, good evening. Thank you for, for allowing us to be here tonight. I'm afraid I can't talk as fast and cover as much as Nancy did. She did a great job there. Thank you for allowing us to present our, our Sibley Continuous Improvement Plan tonight. Joining me in tonight's presentation are instructional coaches Becky Ganey and, and Tanya Will, and also our, our PALS coach, and it's Peg Witt. So I'm gonna go, briefly go through our continuous improvement plan and some of the, some of the highlights from, from the plan, and then, the three of them are gonna come up and talk about what we went through, and what we did last year, and what we're working on this year as we move forward into this next school year. First, a look at our MCA proficiency. The, the top score is our reading proficiency score from last year, the bottom score is our math proficiency score from last year, and all of that information is presented in our school improvement plan. The, the reading SMART goal, we had reading, math, and, and climate goals last year. Our reading SMART goal here is, is in its second year, just like our other two goals. And last year, I reported that we met with Hope, and we were looking for a different way to, to report our goals in our school improvement plan. And she helped us realize that a, that a realistic goal tied to the MAP score is one that you see here, where we're looking at a certain percentage of our second through fifth graders will meet or exceed their individualized growth target on the fall-to-fall assessment. And we typically do a, we do all of our students in the fall, as far as a MAP assessment go, and then the spring is more of an optional assessment process. And, and that happens mostly in our primary grades, just because of the MCA occurring in both, in, in grades three, four, and five. But in meeting with Hope, we started talking about measuring the MAP score. We considered goals that were in the 60 to 65% range, and of students meeting their growth target, but both Hope and former DAC Roger Jenny suggested setting a goal to 50% for the first couple of years, for a couple of different reasons. According to Hope, 50% is about, is what NWA would expect, that they're setting, now that they're setting median growth targets for our students. The way Hope explained it made sense. She said, "We have to look at it like a bell-shaped curve, and typically, half your class will fall on the right side of the curve, and the other half of the class will fall on the left side of the curve. While scores over the next few years will help us establish a baseline for future years, we've made some adjustments to the goals moving forward." Now, the top score you see, the 43, the 62, the 61, and the 51, those are scores from 2015, the fall of 2015. The bottom scores you see, the 56, the 65, the 75, and the 63, are scores that you, that we achieved this year. So that's our, that's our current second graders. Keeping in mind, those current second graders had, had all of their instruction in first grade for the most part. And then, as I reported last year, they had the long summer of forgetting, and we have three weeks of instruction, and then they take the test. So it really is a pretty good measure of, of, you know, what happened in first grade. As we look at, at goals for this upcoming year, I, I mentioned earlier, we, we talked about establishing something that might be more of a stretch goal. Considering we, we're looking at, at MAP scores for fifth graders, we kept our second grade goal at 50% moving forward for next year. But based on scores for third, fourth, and fifth grade, and how students performed last year, we're looking at more of a stretch goal for them. So being our second grade students had a, had 56% of them passing or, or meeting their growth target, we're looking at 60% of those students meeting their growth target in third grade, 70% in fourth grade, and 80% in fifth grade. Again, these are stretch goals. These are something, this is something that we're shooting for. We certainly hope to, to be there. I mean, our, our, our goal is that all of our students are proficient readers by, by third grade, and we want to continue that trend moving forward. As we look at our math SMART goal, same scenario plays out here as far as the, the top line of scores going horizontally is our 2015 fall MAP assessment. The second line of the white scores is our 2016 MAP assessment, and those are students who are meeting or exceeding their individualized growth target on the fall MAP test. Because we moved to the, to the Everyday Math fourth version, the EM4, we're trying to standardize some of our goals here. So as far as, as far as stretch goals, we're looking at stretch goals, but, but the one thing is, we want to see how the EM4 works with our students, how our students work with it. One thing that you'll see at Sibley, and I believe I'm correct in this, is that all of our PLC goals are literacy-related this year. Is that right? Yeah. So, so really, we're, we're watching that EM4. The alignment looks good. It's way different than what we worked with before. And I'll tell you that, that most of our teachers feel like they are brand-new teachers when they're, when they're looking at and studying how to teach that math curriculum. So every day is a new day for them, and it reminds me of 1999, when we implemented Everyday Math for the first time here. And it's, it's, it's new and exciting, and a lot of work for those teachers. The, the goals we're looking at here are, again, our stretch goals, 50% in second grade, 65% in grades three and four, and 75% in grade five. We also looked at, at our English learners, and we were looking at the same thing that Bridgewater's looking at from the Z-score perspective. But by the, our goal, our goal last year was by the spring of 2016, Sibley fourth and fifth grade English learners will average a greater-than-zero Z-score as measured on the MCA reading and math assessment. In, in meeting with Hope, we looked at the, the greater-than-zero score, and we had a minus .16 for grade four, and a plus .23 for grade five in reading. In math, a plus .075, and a minus .34 in math, and Hope said, "Throw that out the window." Correct?
Correct.
Correct. Because our cell size is so small. The cell size of those students, that I won't, I won't tell you the cell size, I'll tell you it's, it's tiny. And it's one of those where it's way too small for statistical relevance. So I said, "Hope, what, what would you write, how would you write the goal, based on a small cell size?" And she recommended the goal below, by the spring of 2017, 100% of EL students in grades four and five will have a positive Z-score as measured on the MCA reading and math assessment. So that's what we're going with. It's something that, that is, is very attainable if you look at the, the plus-minus scenario there. It's very attainable if you look at the, the numbers, as far as the, the, the students that we're looking at. So it's something that we're gonna, we're gonna roll with for next year. School climate, very similar to Bridgewater. We had a school climate goal that was written in a way that we would measure our, our parent responses, and, and because we didn't, because we moved to Thought Exchange, we didn't do the same survey that we did in previous years. And I can tell you that in completing the spring survey, 95% of the parents surveyed will agree or strongly agree that students show respect for other students, teachers show respect for students, and they feel welcome at Sibley. We were always in that 90-plus percent range in the past. We feel good about, about the data that we received on that. But what we're doing is, with, with Peg Witt in the PALS position, she's doing a great deal of staff development, along with her, her responsibilities of working with students and teachers and whatnot, and parents, families. But what, we have focused on a praise-to-reprimand ratio at Sibley, and our goal for next year is to improve student behaviors with implementation of best practices. Staff will engage in the four-to-one praise-to-reprimand ratio as measured by classroom observation. And that's something that Peg will touch on when she comes up and talks about what we're working on moving forward this year. At this point, I am going to turn the presentation over to Tanya and Becky and Peg, and they'll take it from here.
Hello, everyone. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the professional development at Sibley. One way we can really strengthen student learning is to just ensure that our teachers are also being developed professionally. So professional development at Sibley occurs in several ways. I'm going to be outlining our monthly sessions that are held with all licensed staff, and Becky will outline the ongoing professional development that occurs through PLC work and through instructional coaching. So our monthly sessions are a time for us to gather together to really strengthen our learning culture. This year, we're exploring the district's professional development theme of 21st century skills. This is an exciting theme that reaches all areas of learning, since critical thinking, creative thinking, communication, and collaboration can be explored in all content areas. We added one more word to this group, connectedness, as we realized the extreme importance of this factor in students' lives, as well as the importance in our own professional growth. And inspiring this year's study is our work from last year around growth mindset. Here we go. All right. As we cultivate growth mindsets, this impacts our language, our responses, and opportunities for both teachers and students. During our professional development sessions, we take a look at what currently is in place, and then we work together to infuse these skills into our teaching and learning. We also extended an invitation to Sibley families to learn more about various topics like growth mindset and oral language fluency, specific to reading, by offering sessions during conferences that were part of the Sibley Learning Series. This was This was a new way to connect with our families and included information sharing, questions,
Tanya shared the overall picture of our whole group staff development, but our professional growth doesn't stop there. Uh, we work at this in a number of ways. Instructional coaching and cognitive coaching sessions take place daily, and the work of the PLC continues to be the force behind all that we do. Teachers have become masters at looking at the data and using it to inform their instruction to meet the needs of all learners. Coaches serve as a support and resource for PLC teams. We help teams gather data, navigate viewpoint, analyze the data, and then help them make instructional decisions based on that data. As our work in PLCs has evolved, it seemed a natural transition to carve out time for vertical conversations and sharing. One time per month, grade levels meet with another grade-level team to talk about instruction. These conversations have become a place to talk about student transitions into new grades and to share best practices and make decisions about common language. I'm going to share some specifics about what is happening in the area of reading. Tanya will cover math and Peg will talk about climate. So as I was preparing for, um, this presentation, I went back and looked in our Northfield Language Arts belief statements. Um, on the website, you will find statements that explain our district beliefs that a balanced approach to literacy is the most effective language arts instruction. In the Reader's Workshop approach, teachers form trusting relationships with students when they know their strengths, interests, and needs. Knowing students as readers is the cornerstone of the workshop model, and it allows teachers to offer additional support when needed and also challenges based on student needs. SIBLY teachers carefully find the balance of planning literacy instruction using the Northfield frameworks, which includes the Common Core standards, while adjusting their instruction to meet the needs of the children sitting in front of them. Our work around the Reader's Workshop continues to evolve as we work with challenging standards and our use of data to inform our teaching. I think Mary spoke about the Tier One Fidelity Grant earlier. Uh, Mary and I are facilitating the work around MDE's Tier One Fidelity Survey to gather information at each elementary building about core reading instruction. We've had one meeting so far this year. Um, that was the place where we gathered data by, uh, surveys that teams filled out and representatives came back and shared that data. Um, we have meetings this week and next, um, to share the data and make an action plan. The discussions have been really productive and have given us insight into the workings of each building, where we are strong and where there are challenges. I believe this work will be pivotal as we move forward on how to best serve the needs of our changing population of readers. MTSS, um, Kathy Bennett continues to be, uh, support for struggling readers and is a key player in all things regarding reading at SIBLY. Peter Magore was hired this year. He was a former Reading Core tutor. Um, he was hired to support upper-grade readers to help offset the larger class sizes. Um, we have two full-time Minnesota Reading Core positions that are split among three people. Part of my position is also to work with teachers. I push into a lot of, um, flex groups. Um, I work with some small groups of students who need support, and I also work with some, uh, proficient readers to offer challenges. One exciting, um, thing that has come out, um, in my work with the third-grade team is, um, I got really, um, excited about learn, doing some research on digital reading and, um, what happens to kids when they have to take tests on, on a screen. And, um, so I am working with the third-grade teachers to, um, help kids, um, guide them in, um, navigating screens. Really, their comprehension goes down when they're reading on screens. As we all know, we kind of are skimming and scrolling on screens, and so for students to take a test, it's a challenge. So we're really focusing on that, and then we'll take the OPa in January and get some more information on if that has made an impact. Um, we talked about PLCs, support, and vertical conversations, and of course, when I see Beyond Words up in print, it makes my heart palpitate because I need to get going. But, um, that is our biggest celebration in the spring. You're always welcome to come. Um, it is a really big community event for SIBLY and, um, it promises to be great again
Well, math has been pretty exciting in the elementary schools this year. Um, Scott talked about how we have, uh, updated our core curriculum to the newest version of Everyday Math, which is often referred to as EM4. Um, this includes some new features, different organization of lessons, tech enhancements, and different, differentiation opportunities. It really stays true to providing very rich mathematical tasks for, uh, students, and it really is emphasizing, uh, the need for, um, expressing themselves through both writing and orally, their mathematical thinking. It's a very strong curriculum and it's very challenging. The days are busy with supporting teachers and their efforts to implement this new curriculum, and, uh, just last week, we had an Everyday Math representative provide training for all our elementary classroom teachers that focused around the Students' Learning Center, which students access on their iPads, as well as different ways to use evaluation and assessment. So, you know, we're working on this along the way. My second point here is mathematical mindsets. Um, it isn't so often that a book comes along in the math world that completely sets you on a course that you wouldn't be on otherwise. Uh, this happened to me with the book Mathematical Mindsets. Uh, in this book, the author, Joe Bowler, uses both research and experience to communicate seven important math norms, and these norms have caused SIBLY teachers to think about their math classrooms, their activities, and responses to students just a bit differently. As a result of the interest in this topic, um, I offered a book study to study class to case-ic teachers across the district last year and an optional session during the fall workshops, um, this August. MDE is now studying this book, and I will attend their seminars and webinars as I'm able as well. In fact, I think it's next week that I'll be going up, going there. MTSS, um, Becky mentioned how this is working, uh, in the reading world. Um, we continue to take a look at how we can support all learners. Uh, we have, uh, Tier Two interventions occurring through, in grades four and five, through, um, Math Core. Uh, these students receive 90 minutes per week of targeted math instruction, um, in addition to their classroom instruction in math. And then at all grade levels, we take a look at extensions and additional interventions as needed. In our PLCs, this continues to be the place to support and continue conversations around student learning and instruction. As Becky indicated, um, these vertical conversations have been particularly helpful to help us better, better understand the needs of the learners as they transition from grade to grade. And then a celebration that we have in the area of math is Celebrate Math Week. Um, it's becoming a tradition at SIBLY. Um, there will be school-wide math days and grade-level studies and special events. Last year, uh, we put together a school-wide video that was called "Every Kid Counts," which was kind of fun. Um, not sure what we're gonna be doing all school, uh, yet this year, but we're meeting this week to figure that out. Um, this year, it will occur during the week of January 30th, so, um, this happens mostly during the school day, but feel free to stop by. As stated, the SIBLY climate goal of the praise-to-reprimand four-to-one ratio is being put into practice throughout each classroom and learning space. In this PALS position, I'm coaching teachers in this area after classroom observation, tallying the data, and then communicating the results with staff. These regular visits and collecting of data will continue throughout the year. To date, there have been two staff development presentations addressing that four-to-one ratio. The first presentation placed an emphasis on behavior-specific praise statements, and the second was led by Kelly Fearcombe, our district behavioral consultant, focusing on the research behind four-to-one and implement, implementing best practices such as describe it, label it, and praise it. This fall, teachers identified students who might benefit from instruction in a small-group setting, working on social skills lessons, specifically in the area of self-regulation and building and maintaining healthy friendships. These small-group meetings are held weekly. The Mind Up Social and Emotional Program has been launched in all second-grade classrooms as well. Um, SIBLY is a responsive classroom building with the principles of this program demonstrated each day at morning meeting time. We're taking that format and proactively expanding it to quarterly all-school meetings. These gatherings will embrace the responsive classroom philosophy of CARES, which is an acronym for Cooperation, Assertion, Responsibility, Empathy, and Self-Control. Our Swiss data collection is the Schoolwide Information System, which streamlines the collected data on behavior incidents and provides information to staff on areas of need and future behavioral goals. And the MTSS, I'm, I'm excited to be a member of our student support team, um, participating with teachers and other professionals in our work with students, implementing and assisting with behavioral interventions and data collection. We communicate with parents and work together to identify the concern. We teach the expectation. We reinforce that behavior and, of course, celebrate the results. And for our PLC, I'm part of the PALS PLC, communicating with my colleagues, Adam Danielson at Bridgewater and Melissa Larson at Greenville Park on a weekly basis. And then within SIBLY, I attend grade-level and specialist PLCs, addressing a variety of concerns and facilitating discussions in the area of social and emotional needs in and outside of the classroom.
Okay. Thank you to, uh, Peg and Tanya and Becky for, for their assistance here tonight. Are there any questions or comments that you have?
Excellent presentation. Questions or comments from board members? Rob?
I have a question either for Becky or Tanya about, under MTSS, the, maybe I just missed this, interventions and extensions. Could you explain what extensions are?
Whenever we're looking, um, at a classroom and talking that over with teachers, we, uh, we expect that about 80% of the students are going to fall nicely within the core curriculum and that we'll need to support some on both ends. And so, um, if, um, if students already know what the teacher's intending to teach, then we might need, we might provide the teacher with some materials to help with extensions, or, um, in some instances, we might provide a volunteer, or we might, uh, step in and, and provide that extension ourselves.
Great, thanks.
Good question. Other questions or comments? Dr. Allen?
I just have a couple of things. Excellent report, great job by the SIBLY team, really impressed. Mathematical mindsets, what I'm really impressed about the mathematical mindsets pieces, I think Scott, you and I have visited pretty close to every room in, in the building?
Every room. Well, every, every K-five classroom.
Every K-five, and the mathematical mindset posters are everywhere. I can't go in a place and not see it, and, um, what I think is really good is that sharing that common language, you know, across all classrooms about, uh, mathematical mindset. And we know when people are using common language, it's gonna help with our vertical articulation, which is the second thing I'm thrilled with. Twice now, we've heard intentional work at buildings about building vertically, and I think if you think about it, we have really grouped ourselves for years and years around grade-level teams and departments, all very important. But in my position, I have the luxury of seeing every classroom K-12, and I can see in sixth and seventh-grade classrooms, things that have been taught or maybe not taught in some others or other grades. I really appreciate the mathematical mindsets, the way that you have everybody in the building rallied around it and bought into it, and that it's vertically articulated because that's critical. It's not people working in just their own little pods, people are looking, you know, above them and below them and learning from that. I think that that's really key, and I can't say how, enough about how thrilled I am about the four-to-one, uh, praise-to-reprimand ratio. It's, it's not only common sense, I'm happy that there's data behind it, you know, I mean, that's good, we'll, we'll always take the research. So I'm really excited to hear what you learned from that as you implemented and using that new resource of our district behavioral specialists this year that we share with the Cannon Valley Special Education District. I think that, that is showing how we're using that very specific resource, how we're making it actionable, uh, in the school with this four-to-one positive, uh, to reprimand ratio. So really pleased with those, those several pieces. And both groups talked about how thought exchange has changed the way that we have traditionally done that, and I really appreciate people bringing that forward because I think we'd all agree, we probably have the richest set of information from thought exchange that we've ever, it just is harder to quantify. So I look forward to working with people as we move forward to figure out, is there a way for us to use that information and quantify some of it for some of those climate goals? But great job by the SIBLY team, really impressed with those pieces, so I couldn't hold back. You can hear my enthusiasm, right?
No, it was an excellent recap. I mean, you really hit so many of the highlights, and, um, just wanted to, um, thank Becky and Tanya, who we look forward to every year, and, and your, um, just knowledge and experience and everything you bring to reading and math, and then to point to Peg Witt. You've really hit the ground running with the new PALS position, and that was clearly evident in your, um, in your presentation, so that's addition, additional strength to SIBLY, so it's really great to see. So, any other final questions or comments? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Now you finally get to go home and end your day at, you know, 8:50, so we appreciate your patience. Okay, so we have, um, worked our way through, um, items for information, or items for discussion and report, and, um, we haven't already heard enough about World's Best Workforce. We need to do it one more time as we go to items for individual action. So we, um, we'll move on through here, items for individual action then. Again, World's Best Workforce 2015-16 Annual Report. Is there a motion to approve the 2015-16 World's Best Workforce Annual Report as presented? Moved by Margaret. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next item for individual action is the motion to accept the 2000, is there a motion to accept the 2015-16 Audit Report as presented? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Fritz. Are there any questions or comments regarding the audit?
Yes.
Yes. And again, our thanks to Val and her team, because that's just crazy good, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, we're so lucky. Fortunate that we have such incredible, it's not luck, it's nothing like about it.
Right, right.
I needed to, uh,
It's skill.
Replace that word with fortunate for the skills and everything you bring. So, um, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the 2015-16 Audit Report as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, our third item for individual action is the substitute teacher proposal. I will have, uh, Dr. Hillman, do you want to just present that quick and then we'll go to a motion followed by questions or comments?
Yeah, so at the last board meeting, Director of Human Resources Molly Beeson, who shared with you a concept that we are, um, looking at and requesting your approval to implement by hiring two full-time substitute teachers. And Molly did a, a very good job last time of explaining the proposal, and so again, what we're looking at is hiring two teachers, $25 an hour. The caveat to recruiting these folks would be that there would be benefits, they would be reserved for those morning-of absences. So when, uh, the teacher, you know, wakes up at 6:30 in the morning or 5:30 in the morning and, you know, has something that's gonna prevent them from being at work in the day, those morning-of absences are the ones that we really struggle filling, uh, in the current economy. And again, we're not the only school struggling, uh, with, uh, substitute teachers, and in fact, uh, the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, which Margaret is on the board there, approved this, a very similar proposal at their meeting last Tuesday, and we got the idea when Molly was calling and talking to her colleagues in other districts about what were they doing to try to mitigate this issue. So, uh, again, the key thing is these would be two people that would be hired full-time under our other staff agreement because, again, because the requirements for a short-call sub-license, they're not eligible for, to be part of the teacher's bargaining unit. They don't necessarily have to have that, but that's the minimum requirement. And what we think is that especially with a, a crop of graduates graduating here in December, we believe we're gonna have some really good applicants for those positions. Uh, and what we're just, wanted to share with you, again, we're not gonna go into all those details, but after you have a motion, a second on the floor, Molly is here, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, excellent. So as an item for individual action, is there a motion to approve the proposal to hire two full-time substitute teachers as presented? Moved by Ellen. Second by Jeff. Okay, questions or comments?
Just a question out of curiosity. Are we having, are we able to fill those planned-ahead vacations? Are those filling up okay?
Yes.
Okay. These are the morning. I, I know it's the morning up, but it just, we're not having trouble filling ahead.
Yeah, the in-advance ones that are put into the system in advance are, are filled on a very regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, excellent question. Fritz?
Just because the one question that came up at the last meeting had to do with establishing a sense of, of security.
Just because the one question that came up at the last meeting had to do with establishing a sense of security that there will be work for those two people every day. I was going to request a very brief report, either, say, in March, or at least at the end of the school year, just on how that went. Did those people work every day? Were there some weird cases where they didn't?
Yeah, we can certainly keep track of that, and we'll know that, because we'll have to have a special way of slotting them into the morning-of absences. So yeah, we'll have that data.
And I think also, Fritz, if you recall, the intent is to hire these folks on a year-to-year basis. You know, because as the substitute pool were to fill, again, if the economy changes so that we have a greater pool of substitute teachers and maybe don't need the strategy. So before, we would ask you to make that decision, we would always, of course, bring you the data, because we want you to be informed about how we've used them in the past before we move ahead.
So we would need that data regardless, to know that whether we should post those positions for the next school year or not.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments? I just wanted to briefly comment and thank Molly and Matt for coming forward with this proposal and presenting it to the board. I mean, we're really trying to think outside of the box and really work on this issue. And I think that it's really important to note that, how difficult it's been for the situation for a number of our staff, including building secretaries who have to scramble administrators what they're asked to do, Molly, and also, most importantly, district teaching staff, who've had to really, to pinch-hit and do a lot of things. So I think that we understand that this is one solution and maybe not the total solution, that there is going to be a lot of additional work around trying to address what we know statewide is happening, probably nationwide is happening. But we're doing, making really great strides here, I think, locally, to try to address the situation. But I think it's important to acknowledge that it's been a real strain for the buildings. And so we really appreciate the problem-solving and the solution that you've come to the board with. So I obviously fully intend to support this motion. With that, is there any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those then in favor of the motion to approve the proposal to hire two full-time substitute teachers as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so our last, but certainly not least, item for individual action is the Master Facilities Plan. Dr. Hillman, do you want to present that initially, and then we'll go to a motion to address any questions and comments after that?
Well, this has certainly been a long and fruitful road. I wouldn't even say it was a long and winding road. It was a long and fruitful road. Again, what I'm asking for this evening is the adoption of the Master Facilities Plan Executive Summary. What that executive summary clearly identifies are the two portions of the Master Facilities Plan, the building lifecycle management part of it, and then, of course, the 10-year, long-term facilities maintenance update part of it. And the key thing is that, remember, this is something we would plan to bring back to you on a regular basis, at least annually, to be able to share with you where we're at with the plan and offer any other feedback or thoughts that we have at that point, any recommendations, those kinds of things. But if you just, to review, we started this in 2014. And so I cannot imagine that we have had a more thorough process than when we did 25 public meetings, 500-plus people who provided thought, feedback through thought exchange. And so I think a key thing here is that when you're talking about a long-range facilities plan, you want to have lots of people put their heads together. And as I really look at this and reflect upon it, having led all 25 of those public meetings and worked through the thought-exchange process, I'm really proud of the process that we used to get to this point. I think it really legitimizes the work that's been done. It legitimizes the next project plans that we have and at what point those are determined to be moving forward. And then it also gives clear press, or gives clear direction through the 10-year, long-term facilities revenue program that Mr. Jim Colseth will be administering here as we move forward. So we have about beat that drum as long as we can go.
Okay, so let's get to the motion, shall we? Turn the page, sorry. So is there a motion to adopt the Master Facilities Plan Executive Summary as Presented? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Noel. Questions, comments board members have? Ellen?
I just had a comment that all of the time put into this by Dr. Hillman and the staff. And seeing it in this executive summary, I mean, I just, I'm really pleased with the effort that went in and the plan that's been laid out for the board, and I feel really comfortable with the process that you described.
Excellent. Great comment. I think, Rob, you had your handle.
Yeah, I'm just one, so one of the things on here is a facilities advisory committee. When would that be formed, and would any next steps come out of that committee? So for example, you know, you say on here, a plan but not an immediate bond issue. If we were to decide to go forward with anything, would that come out of that committee first, before it comes to the board?
So what we plan on doing is modeling the facilities advisory committee after the finance advisory committee. And the current finance advisory committee includes six members of the community, each serving a three-year term, I believe it is. And so to begin with, we would stagger those six members so that after the first year, we would specifically ask people who knew the district's facilities to serve that one-year term, almost from some institutional knowledge perspective. After the first year, they would cycle off and new people would come on. That way, we will always have a core of veterans and people who've been through it, and always new people who are there to learn over that process. Plus, I think what we learned is if you ask people with a time commitment, they will step forward and serve. If it seems like it's something that they're going to have to do forever, maybe not so much. And plus, we then have an opportunity to get different perspectives from the community. Of course, the committee would involve myself, Jim Colseth, Val Murdestorff. We would also include a principal representative, teacher representative, most likely someone from our custodial, head custodian crew. That piece would be determined. Now, that crew, that committee would give a report to the board and say, "We think you should have greater discussion about this, this, or this, or we think you should be able to hold off on this for some period of time." But remember that it's an advisory committee. And so the board, every year, will hear that Master Facilities Executive Summary update. We have told you we'll plan to do that each year in March, so that you can think about capital expenditures, you know, those kinds of things. And then have the opportunity every year to say, "Let's review that building lifecycle management plan. Is it time to do a bond, or is it time to wait another year to consider this again?" So while it may not generate a bond issue right away, the board certainly would have the ability to say, "We're ready to go," at whatever point. Because remember, unlike an operating levy, the district could actually hold a bond election anytime during the year. Now, I think we would all want to align it with another election for the obvious reasons. But that is how I see it working. Is that helpful?
Okay, great question, Rob. Other questions or comments? Noel?
For about the past six weeks, people have asked, "I see you're going to build a new high school. I see you're going to run Greenville School." And I said, "You know, the board can't do that, or some of the people in this community, they can do that by themselves. It takes planned action." And so I hope that the message gets out along with the action that we took, that this is a step forward to do both of those items, that it'll take community involvement to do it.
And Noel, I think we have, I think we've been pretty diligent in trying to hammer that over and over, that it doesn't necessarily initiate, but we have the identified priorities that are the pieces that we look at. But I do think that's a piece we have to continue to talk with folks about, what is it, what it means. It's a plan, and here's how that piece works. But I think that we fight against sometimes the McDonaldization of the news process, for lack of a better term, in terms of just people seeing what the core of the plan is. And I think sometimes just people jump to conclusions. So we have to continually make sure that we're communicating the specifics of the plan to the best of our ability.
Thank you.
I'm looking at path two, three, and four. Did I miss path one, and does path one do nothing?
So I think what we did is, we picked and, we selected from the analysis that the ATSNR did. And their pathway one was not something, in fact, their pathway one was the piece that Thought Exchange and the public meetings told us was an absolute no, which were the pieces of those individual work at each building. So more of a Band-Aid approach. And the Thought Exchange data really clearly told us that people did not want us to be putting significant additional money into a 52-year-old high school, or some of those other kinds of things. So we really didn't even consider pathway one because the clear opposition to it.
Thank you. Excellent. Good question. Okay. So are there any other questions or comments? I just want to echo what Ellen said. I've been extremely proud to be a part of this process, and it's really been good. And I, so I love the process of where, that got us here, but then the process going forward with the facilities committee and look forward to them coming back possibly as early as the spring, as we look to identify. A couple of things that have really surfaced, burgeoning preschool program and an aging high school, so we'll move forward. Good. Any other questions or comments?
Well, if I can just thank Director of Buildings Grounds, Jim Colseth. You know, Jim came into this about a year into it and has just been provided just expert consultation to us throughout, as we finish this piece up. I think if we go back further, we need to, of course, thank Dr. Chris Richardson, Superintendent at the time, when we started this. At that time, Paul Bell, the Director of Buildings Grounds, or a lot of meetings with ATSNR and other parts as we looked through that. So a lot of people who have really, I think Fritz, you've been at every meeting we've ever had about this. So just really appreciate the people who came out to give us that feedback, because I think we have not only a solid plan, but I think we have a plan that we can all look at and say, "Yes, that's the next play when the board chooses to call it."
Thank you for the thank you. That was page two of my notes, and I forgot to turn it... No, but I'm glad, and you hit, it is really extremely important. And I think as a board, we really do absolutely value what got us here and how we got here with all the district stakeholders and everybody giving us their input. So it's just been a really, really great process. And I think that we can all probably look back and think it's one of the hallmarks of our tenure on the board is being able to have been a part of this process and leading the district for years to come with our facilities. So, okay, with that, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, you have a comment?
Can you put a little bit of contrast in for, you know, the priority between Greenville doing something and here?
You know, what's interesting is that when you look at data, you're always looking, does one priority raise higher than the other? And what's interesting is no matter which way we looked at the data, Jeff, we, the public did not have a preference one way or the other. I think it's because we really see that there are unique needs at both sites. I actually think that that's a real strategic advantage for you as a board, because you have two projects, two next projects that have been identified as both having fairly equal need, and then allowing current circumstances to help with whatever decision. So I'm just going to give you a what-if. So what if, in some way, shape, or form, the legislature comes back and approves Governor Dayton's longstanding desire to have a more universal four-year-old preschool? Many schools are in a scramble for things like this. We have a play we can call right away that we could ask the public to help us with, and we would be able to address that particular need. We also have some other pieces as we think about our strategic plan. I'm going to come back to that over and over again, and the near-term priority of making sure that we have equitable support for all career and college pathways. That is going, we know, is going to spark some discussion about how, what we teach and how we teach it at the high school. As we get through that conversation, we may very well find that our facilities do not match what we intend to teach for curriculum as we move forward. And so that may be a decision-making point for the board to say, hey, we may really need a high school building that matches the kind of curriculum that we want to create lifelong learners, quality democratic citizens, you know, people who have all those different kinds of choices for their life moving forward. So as a board, you have an opportunity, we do not have the luxury. A lot of districts have a very straight data point. We hit this number of students, we have to ask the public to build. We hit this number of students, we have to close a building or renovate or do something else. Unfortunately, we don't have that kind of long-term data. Some shorter-term data suggests that we're growing at a rate much faster than what our demographer predicted. Though if you look at our students who are birthed to five-years-old, actually, that data is dead-on with what Hazel predicted. We're getting kids who are moving in after kindergarten. That is really creating some of the stress. So you have, I think we're actually in a very good position, because you don't have a clear one and two. You have a 1A and a 1B. And based upon the circumstances on either an annual basis or as often as you want us to come and report, you can make a decision upon other things, other than just that one and two. In fact, I think it provides us a lot of flexibility, which is good. I always prefer flexibility.
Good. Great question. All right, so are there any other final questions or comments? Okay, so with that, we have a motion in a second to adopt the Master Facilities Plan Executive Summary as Presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a few items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Rob. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information, I don't, there wasn't anything added, was there, in the table?
There was none.
Okay, so we have no items for information this evening. So just a reminder of future meetings, two upcoming regular school board meetings, Monday, December 12th, and Monday, January 9th, 2000, well, that would be 2017, January, both at 7:00 PM in the High School Media Center. So with, oh, I'm sorry. Rob?
The January 9th, is that actually two meetings, because there's a organizational meeting and then a regular meeting?
Yeah, that's a good point. You're right.
And then Julie, if we could also point out that on December 12th, we're also holding the annual truth and taxation hearing. That's part of the board meeting. Remember, those used to be separate meetings, and now the state has said we can do it in a single meeting. So just a piece that, that notification has gone out, but just so that people are aware that truth and taxation is also the very exciting truth and taxation is on December 12th.
Okay, so I will just recap again, because I had, I apologize for my incomplete information. So we do have a regular school board meeting on Monday, December 12th at 7:00 PM. The first part of that regular school board meeting will be the truth and taxation meeting. The next meeting in, actually, first meeting of 2017 is Monday, January 9th, also at 7:00 PM. But we'll start that with the organizational meeting and then move on to the regular school board meeting. So great, thank you for that. All right, so with that, I ask for a motion, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.